No, Jimmy's graduating and I've never been to DC so I'm using it as an excuse.
Yeah.
Fifty, yeah. March twenty.
Match, match. She's gotta be here for the fourteenth, we need her.
I'll be there at St. Patty's.
Jack, you going this year?
Yeah.
Hey, did you get tickets?
Princess St. Patrick?
No. Why? It's a long story.
Okay.
I talked about, um, my, no, my, my, there were six of us that were home, my two brothers and their spouses and my daughter and myself. But then, when I called them, I told them, I told them they'd call by the line. And they said that they couldn't guarantee that we'd be, yep. Oh, and that, I got that, I mean, apparently I was late, I didn't want that. So, I, I texted them and I said, can you do anything? She didn't answer me for like four days.
She just came, she just came back when she was away.
Right, so when I got, when I got the answer like Sunday, wait one second.
Okay. Three, two, one, smile, lights.
Yeah, hour being after seven, having a quorum. Open the meeting first item, February sixth minutes. Anybody have any issues on?
I'd just like to take a little more time looking at it.
So you don't wanna do anything?
Unfortunately, I didn't really get a chance to look at it at length and I know we had a lot of interesting, um, matters at that meeting.
So next time then, all right?
Yep.
All right, other business, zoning articles, just wanna tell us when it's happening, right?
Yeah, I just wanna tell you it's scheduled for April, hold on one second.
April what?
April third.
April third, okay.
April third. April third, meeting.
Yep.
All right, next one. Sign the plans?
Yep. This is Chetan. Um, we have a letter from Liz saying no appeal has been taken. And so they're good to go.
Do you have markers?
Sure.
Sure. You're very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, thank you.
Oh, anytime.
This meeting will be three hours now, Jack, you listen up. We're gonna just do like slow. I know, Jack, we, we have a hockey game tonight too, watch it.
I know, don't scratch me with those beautiful moon nails. Huh? Make a motion to endorse, and she didn't give him today during work.
I will second, Jack.
We'll have a second. Always David?
Aye.
Post abstain, okay. See the night we don't have a bunch of them.
Yeah. I'm gonna look like a cookie.
So.
So you have the minutes on the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Will you, you need a padded tent? She wants to break a nail. Never mind. I don't know, I did myself.
Beautiful, Jack.
And no testings have a nail salon, but they know. She said she's gonna be quiet so far, we're doing good.
You haven't broken her yet.
Oh yeah, I'm sure.
That's a strong pen.
I miss the old memory graph days, when you could get off, right? We're going this way, okay. That's my pen.
Oh, look at her. Oh, look at her going backwards. Ooh.
It's called efficient.
Is that what you call it?
Mm-hmm.
Did I?
Right. I learned something. Look at those nails.
They don't match the squared sweater.
Ah, they kinda do, they kinda do, they kinda do.
I saw that the glass is way down there.
She'll be, she'll be rocking the green. St. Patty's Day.
Nah, I contemplated that today, I don't, I don't think that's my thing.
Did you, you got a vest, you heard you got a vest, you get the padded vest?
What are you talking about?
They do a good job.
St. Patty's Day.
Yeah. Put extra slack down.
I have a hoodie.
You didn't get a padded vest?
Do you mean at, um, front house? No, I got a hoodie.
Yeah, yeah.
I've gotten stuck on that.
It's a good hoodie.
You're not gonna wear it.
I wear it.
No, you're not gonna wear it the day of.
Oh no.
Oh no.
We walk down it all the time.
Very professional.
Yes, you have to dress.
Yes. Of course, Katie Tur- a baby, you know, I mean.
Oh, okay.
It's like walking chewing gum, don't talk to her if she's signing.
I think she's actually doing hello.
No, but she, you watch, you can't sign while she's talking.
I don't know why I come.
Oh, I love, we, what do we always say to each other?
Put your middle initial there too.
She's very fancy. When you reach your status, Jack.
Hundred years from now, someone will come over. Found one of her nails.
It's like watching paint dry.
And then we're done.
Why can't we do, I always ask this, why can't we do other things while we sign?
Well, we have no other things to do. How is that? What would you like to do, say?
I'll, I'll get to use your pen, wow, that's amazing.
See, this is called the agenda.
I understand.
And we did zoning, we're signing this, and the first hearing is at seven ten.
Seven ten.
Well, we gotta wait. Ooh. Alright, I'm out.
Nice.
Okay, I gotta put my glass off.
Cow.
Cow.
Cow. Cow.
Not one cow.
There we go.
Not the bad cow.
Look at them over here, they'll be like a chip, they'll be like a chipmunk.
Nice.
No? Really?
He found out they weren't gluten free.
Mike, could you have one more cow, maybe?
No.
Is this for the hearing for Jack?
Was you going from the middle and working each way, Paul?
What's that?
You going from the middle and working full way in backwards?
I was, yes. I'm working every other page.
All right. Guys, you know my sign, I'm ready. All right. With the hour being after seven ten, we have a public hearing. For, from a single family subdivision. Received from Leslie Lincoln, successor trustee Davidson Family Trust, ninety-three North Street, Rock Park, Mass. The property is shown on assessors parcel forty-two, two forty-eight, forty-two, two forty-nine, zoning district RB. Wampel Resource Production Area One, Zone Two. Uh, the, the property is at Rock Park Registry Book Three-One-Eight-One-Two, page five fifty-five. An existing property is located at twelve sixty-three dash twelve seventy-one Washington Street. And a new road road is proposed to be constructed next to the existing dwelling to support two new buildings built in the rear of the property. As shown on a plan titled Quail Run, twelve sixty-three, twelve seventy-one, Washington Street, my legacy. That being said, the hearing is open and just like everyone, we'll allow the applicant to present. I'll read comments from any other boards or anyone else, board will ask questions, and the people can ask questions at the end. So with that being said, Stan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan Merrick with Legacy Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. We have filed a definitive subdivision application for property at, uh, two lots here adjacent to each other. One, twelve seventy-one and twelve sixty-three, twelve sixty-three is vacant, but it has an address. About two acres of land on Washington Street. So this is, uh, heading down from the Cumbes, heading down towards the water treatment plant, it's on the right. At the top of the hill. We've presented to you, like we've done in the past, two designs, one is a conventional plan and one is a waiver plan. We would like to pursue this as a private way, um, with a reduced construction and waivers. What I did, as we usually do and as you require, provide a, a design for a conventional subdivision. The three lot subdivision, existing home here would reside on Lot One, short road, couple hundred feet, and then Lot Two and Lot Three. So basically, two new houses in addition to the single home. This is the conventional design, typical requirements, paved road, sidewalk, uh, our, we have water and sewer available. So they would be brought into the road. Our stormwater management system is rain gardens, so we have a rain garden on Lot One. Basically handling the runoff for the most part from Lot One along with some of the road runoff. Then we have a, a rain garden on Lot Two, which handles the remainder of the road runoff and the runoff from Lot Two. And then we have a small rain garden on Lot Three, which basically just takes the driveway and roof runoff from Lot Three. And we did, uh, present an application to the Conservation Commission for a land disturbance permit. We've had our first hearing with them, they're just waiting for us to, uh, move things along with you before they wrap that up. They didn't have any concerns. Pretty standard fair, uh, you can see the, the land's fairly flat, it slopes down away from Washington Street a little bit. So, uh, but that, that's the way the drainage runs. Everything behind this property is town forest, so there are... We have a single family neighbor to the right, a single family neighbor to the left, all of this is undeveloped townland, town forest property. All the land slopes towards the town forest. The waiver plan is a twenty foot wide paved width with a caked berm to minimize impervious surfaces. We are, uh, calling out for a landscape island in the middle. We did consult with the fire department, you do have a memo from them on this. Drainage design for the waiver plan is basically the same, except that instead of a catch basin here, we have a swale along the side of the road. Which would shift up runoff and then divert runoff into the rain garden, and then the rain garden overflows into the second rain garden. And that just charges out towards, towards the townland. So, those are the highlights, it's not very involved. The waiver plan involves a number of waivers, obviously, private way, want, no sidewalk, we're requesting. Twenty foot paved width with caked berm, which is typically what we do for a small subdivision like this. That road basically only is gonna service the two new lots in the back. The front house has an existing driveway that goes out to Washington Street. The last thing that I will mention. Our neighbors are here to the right. They created, we had extra land in Lot Three, parcel A. This is gonna be deeded to our neighbors to the right. And that's about it.
All right, let's see what we got there. From Fire Department. Alan Fuba, over, what is the, hey, come on. Over, sorry. Dated the tenth of February. Wampel Fire Department finds these plans acceptable. All right, so. You mentioned about the cul-de-sac, uh, Board of Health voted unanimously, they approved the proposed plan, but would like to recommend adequate street lighting. For safety as well as trash recycling be provided per mass waste ban. Which, they'll bring it to Washington Street, right?
Yeah.
And, what else we got here? Must be all cows, must run out of staples. Yours, Kyle?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I prepared them, I'm all dated today, the applicant's engineer has it as well. There's about thirty comments on there. I don't want you to give me the wrong idea of my review letters, but it doesn't really say anything. I'm meaning in that there's no substantial changes in there, it's the usual comments about, uh, adhering to our standards, drafting, showing some more detail on the layout plan in terms of bounds and things like that. The only real comment that, and I do know that the utility systems are about almost ident- Mr. Merrick has pointed this out already. They're identical, almost identical, one plan to the other. So the only, the only thing I could say that we noticed, um, and I've pointed out once again, that if you go with the private way, that we'll need have a private way covenant and a mutual maintenance agreement, the kind of things that you do when it's not an accepted public way. We've added some detail to have a sign put on there that says private way. Those types of things are all covered in the memo. Um, I do know, and, and, uh, Dan may be able to point that out. There is a large oak tree in the frontage, it's shown on the existing conditions plan, but then I think it, it does not show up on the other various planning profiles grading utility plans. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, that it works with the reduced width road, but it would not with the conventional road. I don't know if you've got a line on that, Dan, or not.
I think I could probably make it with the, I could probably make it work, but it is gonna be very close to this curve line here.
So, and we have seen that before, and it's a public shade tree, et cetera, it's an oak tree, it's pretty good size, it's in excellent condition. It's actually a separate piece of your jurisdiction because it is a public shade tree, but I don't want that necessarily to be overlooked. Any questions? Be glad to answer.
No stone walls are gonna rebuild?
It's not a scenic.
Oh, I'm sorry, different applicant, never mind. All right, uh, we heard cows, we'll start with, we'll start with John.
Question one, what's a rain garden?
What is a rain garden? A rain garden is a fancy, modern way to say very small stormwater infiltration basin. A low impact development technique. So it's, it's a, it's a small depression, one to two feet deep, has a bed of crushed stone under it. It provides treatment and infiltration and it, it meets all the requirements of the stormwater standards. The soil out here is all sand and gravel, excellent soil, so. I expect actually very little, if any discharge from any of the stormwater management systems, we've designed them conservatively.
Looking at the plans, I did notice the square footage of the road, is that on one of these plans I missed, or?
It's not on the plan, I can add that.
Please.
Jack, is you okay?
Um.
I didn't give it back yet. I didn't even lock, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Cause I was like, wait. That's okay.
The other way to flip. That's mine.
And the Fire Department was okay with the circle?
Yeah, we actually, we wanted to do a, a T-style turnaround and they said no, they wanted a cul-de-sac. So we asked them if they'd be okay with the island in the center and they said yes.
Okay, that was what I thought would be issue for them, but yeah. So, the, as built shows, what, forty-six foot roadway and the, with waivers?
The conventional shows a regular twenty-six foot paved road.
Paved road with.
The, the right of way is the same in both forty-six foot right of way. The right of way meets all the requirements.
Which way is the swale diverting the water?
It drains down and down and into the rain garden. Then there's a piped overflow to a manhole, then into the second rain garden, and the second rain garden overflows towards the townland.
Looking at the slopes in the back, it seems, I don't know, it looks steeper, but it's not that steep?
It's fairly steep, but again, we've, we've designed the drainage systems so that even in our calcs, there's very little discharge. In practicality, cause we use a very conservative infiltration rate, there's not gonna be any discharge from any of these infiltration systems.
And you got a couple retaining walls in the back.
That's just for the house, that's just, uh, a likely outcome.
What is the difference in elevation between the outer one and the inner one?
Although, uh, we're just contemplating here that the, the person who develops Lot Three might build a terrace wall. So, four feet tall, three or four feet tall each wall. That's not, that's just an illustration of what could be, how it could be built.
Can I have all your skill, Kyle? It's all ready for you, John.
Ain't gonna work on the reduced one.
What's the requirement for distance between two streets on the same side?
Hundred and fifty feet, two streets.
Okay, so that looks like it fits, okay.
Yeah, the, what street were you looking at?
Hidden lane, that's a long.
Oh, that's, yeah.
It's a ways down.
Yeah, but it's on the opposite.
No, it's same side.
It's on the same side, hidden lane's down.
Yeah, way down there.
Down here.
Um, nothing else at the moment, then?
Phil?
Just a, a little picky thing, I don't, I don't know if we, you know, the, the locust plan's supposed to be one inch to two hundred.
Kyle's got it in his comments. Kyle's got it in his comments.
Yes, so we all, I mean, you know, you got one inch to eighty feet, which obviously is great detail, so, so I don't know whether we should have in our, our, um, rules and regulations that it should be, um, no more than one to two, one inch to two hundred feet or something.
Know why they do that, right? Know why that's in your regs?
Yeah, we ran into this a little bit, so.
When they hand drew your assessor's maps, they're at two hundred scale, that's why it's in your regs.
Ah.
It's meaningless now, but I'm happy to put a two hundred scale locust on there.
I, I don't think it's a big deal, but it's, it's there, so.
It made the thirty comments, Phil.
Okay, so you're, okay, so, um, the, yeah, so it is a private road, so you do, so you need a waiver for the private road, right?
Yeah, the board, so the way you guys normally do this is if you grant the waivers for the private road, uh, all the conventional stuff comes up.
So I didn't see one on the, on the front page, maybe I'm missing it.
All the waivers, so for the conventional, there are no waivers, right? So on the cover sheet, it says conventional plan waiver.
Yeah.
All of the waivers, for the waiver plan are to allow the private way.
Okay, okay, so it's implied that it's private.
Yeah, and that would be one of the conditions, if you were to grant those waivers, one of the conditions of approval would be that a covenant be prepared, as Carl indicated in his memo, that the way be private in perpetuity.
Yeah, yeah, and I think it's good you're giving parcel A to the, the neighbors, that was one of my questions, so that's. And then a couple quick, other quick questions, are all the, are utilities underground, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, and a sewer and water, town water?
Water, electric.
And are you open to, um, the health department, you know, ask, or health, um, board looking for lighting and some lighting?
I mean, that's up to you, I mean, if you want street lighting, and typically in an application like this, we don't really do street lighting on a private way, but, uh, there's a couple ways you can handle that. You could, you could ask, you could have us put street lighting on the, on the, the waiver plan. Another way that it's been, that a lot of communities handle it on small projects like this, is there's a condition that requires that each house put a, a lantern within ten feet of the street layout.
I think I'd go with, go with that one maybe.
For a small application like this.
I would go, I would go with that one maybe. Yeah. And then last, um, trash and recycling pickup, um, that's a.
It'll be by the town.
It wouldn't be by the, even though it's a private way.
Yeah, and they'd just take them out to the end of the road.
Okay. Oh, but they'd have to bring it to the end of, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, okay, that's, that's all I have really, thank you.
Kate?
I have nothing to add.
Hello? Paul?
It's awesome going last because at this point, Greg really do what the hell.
Everything's been asked.
You don't have to talk?
Well, very small part in this play, Dan, so, uh, no, it's, it's... So, I, I, Jack, I would ask is, we, we have to vote if we want the conventional versus private?
Yeah, we can turn the waiver plan down if we want. Or you can turn down any, uh, I'll explain, he's, you have to show that you can do it conventionally, you can't have a plan that you need a waiver to do it. So, we could, we would have to vote on each item on the waiver plan.
Okay.
Doesn't mean he's gonna get the full waiver plan.
I understand. That doesn't, that doesn't hurt the town any, right, if it's a private way?
No, no.
I mean, it's just, really, it's the onus is on them at that point, right?
Yeah, they don't have to maintain anything else.
And make up that subdivision.
But honestly, it's better for the town, the town has to, doesn't have to maintain the road.
Right.
And we think it's better for the neighbors in the neighborhood to have.
Sure.
Less pavement, less disturbance.
But, there's also, that was one of my comments, gonna be multitude of way, he's presenting a, a plan that he doesn't need a waiver. So if we did turn down the waiver plan, then he could go back and ask for waivers on the full plan, correct?
Well, the waiver plan is the waiver.
Oh, you're missing my point, Dan, if we said we don't want the waiver plan, we want a full.
Right.
Then you might ask, do I need a sidewalk, do I need, do you follow?
Yeah, I mean, it's not any different than, yes, I follow what you say.
Okay, you could, you want the full waiver, and if we said no, you could ask.
Well, only ask for waivers for certain things, so you could tackle each one of those waivers one at a time.
No, I, I, I'm just explaining the process that we have here, so, all right, you clear on that?
Yeah, no, no, thank you, thank you, appreciate that.
Regards to the rain garden, are those making a comeback?
Uh, they're, everybody wants rain gardens though.
When did that happen, I mean, like, I'm going back fifteen years ago with Gloucester out on one oh nine, rain gardens.
It happened fifteen years ago and the state's about to redo all their stormwater regulations and, you know, these things are gonna be everywhere.
Yeah, but one thing that wasn't answered by Gloucester Engineering, didn't have a grade eight because, this is what you do in the winter, like today, they don't work.
No, they will work, it's the same as, it's a, it's basically a small infiltration basin with plants in it.
No, I understand that, Dan, but if the ground's frozen, ain't going anywhere.
The water actually soaks through frozen ground. And this has, the way these work is there is...
I'm just pointing stuff out, you go by any field right now and you can skate on it.
Well, there's a layer of ice because the water goes in and it freezes and that layer of ice sits there, but the way the rain gardens work is, they fill up to a certain level, which is providing the treatment volume. And then they overflow into a crushed stone bed underground.
Oh, yeah.
Wouldn't be frozen.
It wouldn't, why, is it more than four feet?
Under coarse crushed stone with no soil in the matrix, doesn't freeze.
I got some of my driveway frozen, but doesn't matter, I'm just pointing out what, I'm asking why they're making a comeback.
Because this is the way stormwater management, stormwater management is going to, it's been going that way for fifteen, twenty years, and now the state's really gonna push it. It's going to a lot more smaller decentralized systems, scattered around a project instead of one big stormwater basin.
The only reason I bring it up also is, I haven't seen you do one of these. This is the first one you've had in front of us, right?
Rain garden?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, well, just saying, hey, where they been and now all of a sudden they're back, so. Plus they don't, they could turn into a piece of, no, no one's watching, I could say the word, but they're not maintained, right?
Well, and like any stormwater facility, it has to be maintained.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, but it, I just wanna know why they're making a comeback, and we talked about that. Have something else written down here? Oh, the lights. I, I can't figure out this world today because we wanna go green, we wanna save energy, we wanna save this, but then they wanna have streetlights on a two lot subdivision.
Yeah, I don't think you need them, but.
No, yeah, I don't either, I don't think you would want them anyway. And the problem with the post lights, which... The other problem with the post lights, which I would say it's up to the individual homeowner, which is, you know, if they want it, they want it, but no one can enforce them to keep the light on, so to speak.
True.
So, but it's just, the Board of Health has done this particularly on small ones, and I never quite understood it. The other thing is for, say, it's, I don't think they have a look at the size of these things to see that it's only in length from the end of that wall. But once again, it's the green stuff. We want lights, but we don't, we're going to have electric cars, but we're going to waste energy. I'm a green person, as you can tell. So you, I don't, we don't have anything else? Now it's audience time? All right, go ahead, John.
I was looking at the side view, whatever. Is the sewer really 20 feet below Washington Street?
Yeah. So there's a, yeah, because this is over the hill.
The hill, yeah.
So there's a chimney there, right? So there's an existing chimney that is a service for the vacant lot, which was never used. So what we're going to do is we're going to run a new line out, and we're going to intercept the chimney, and we're going to cut down the chimney, but we're going to use the chimney, which is the common practice for sewers when they're that deep.
Okay, that's odd. I figured it had something to do with the hill because that was still an awful deep ditch.
Yeah, the sewer ends right down here. It's not far away. Right at the last houses, I think.
Is that the one Blue Diamond put in, Carl?
I think so, yeah.
Frankie put it at 20 feet? Eh, 10, 11, whatever.
No, it's there.
No, it's there.
It's there.
It's at 20 feet, okay.
97, 98.
Okay, any questions from the audience? Want to come up?
You want to come up?
No, just sit there. You can be the only, no. You got to come up, you got to be on TV. Oh, my God! Oh, oh, God! Once they retire, they become such agitators.
I didn't realize you were a green person.
Thank you! No, of name and address and smile that came.
1253 Washington Street. The only thing I would be against is the streetlights.
The streetlights?
No streetlights.
Shouldn't have said that to me, Smitty.
I know I'm going against you.
It's going to look like noon.
I know I'm going against your green, but.
No, you're going with my green. You don't want them either.
No.
Okay, that's it?
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, God.
Be nice.
Anytime, Smitty.
Cats in the mail.
I hope Deach builds those houses. Since no one has anything else, when do you, when do you get through everything so you come back and finalize this?
All I have to do is respond to Carl's comments.
Don't you get stuff from Stormwater and all that?
Jack, I'm waiting for the, for the street name to come in.
Oh, you got the street name?
I gave you a letter on the street name.
I have it. It's gone out to fire police.
Yeah, fine. I mean, if you wanted to.
You're all, I didn't have one from Sewer Water.
Okay.
I don't.
They're meeting Monday.
Yeah, I just, not that I care, but still, it's like, we're missing that. Well, the other one we didn't have was from the cops.
Actually, I think they've taken enough. I think they took it up the last meeting.
Yeah, no, we're missing police and.
Been like a month and a half.
Sewer Water.
I think they met on it.
Yeah, we submitted this quite a while ago.
Go yell at them.
So I have to respond to Carl's comments anyways. I guess my only question is, do you want to discuss the waivers and vote them tonight, and then I could take all the conventional stuff off the plan, or you want to do that later?
Well, my suggestion is just leave everything, and then whatever we, you change, he wants on the waiver plan, even update. Does that make sense?
After the vote.
Yeah, so we still have a record of the original plan.
Sure.
And if we vote, then we vote the waiver stuff. So you want to do that?
Okay.
To get it done? All right.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, on that, in the end, even if, if the waiver plan is approved, we have still kept one sheet. Usually put it in the back of the set of the conventional plan and profile and marked it not for construction, approved plan, whatever you want to call it. We have kept it in the set as approved plan. You haven't done one, but others have.
That's fine. No problem. The plan profile?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
You have a list of waivers for the?
They're on the cover.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
That's, oh, just those? I thought there was more than that.
Nope, that's it.
Okay, we have waiver one, allow landscape island. I'll read them, and if anybody has any issues with them, let us know. The second one is not to require all catch basins at low points. The next one is to allow HDPE drain piping. The next one is allow paved width of only 20 feet. Next one's to not require granite curbing. Next one is not to require sidewalks. And the next one is not to require street trees. And that, that's it? Okay, does anybody have any issues with those?
What is HDPE?
High-density polyethylene plastic drain pipe, which is, aside from subdivision construction, pretty much the standard these days.
And what are we, still RCP?
Yes, but I have no problem with the HDPE.
That's not green, though.
Black.
No, it's green. All right, anybody all set in the waivers? Okay, make a motion to grant the waivers?
Second.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No, you forward, John. Okay, 5-0-0. So if you can, if you want to change the plan for your waiver plan.
Yeah.
And just leave the.
Plan and profile of the conventional plan on the last sheet.
Something like that.
So that there's a record of that at some point. That's all.
Sure.
So you got those, and do we need extension? When will we be ready?
I'll be ready in the next two weeks.
All right, so that'll be the second meeting of March, right?
Yeah.
The second meeting or the first meeting?
No, you won't.
Second.
Second meeting.
Okay, so much 20.
You've got to get all your stuff together. Grab something from the cops, and, well, you'll leave Monday night with Sewer Water.
Do my best.
Why don't we put them before Winter Estates at 7:05?
Do we need an extension? All right, 7:05 on March?
20th.
20th. Okay. All right, you all set?
Thank you for your time.
So see you on the 20th at 7:05, and say hello to John for me Monday night. That's a night, my buddy. Oh, you know what else is going to be here? My other buddy, Lou. Eeks!
So you understand what I'm saying? So the reason we have.
Hey, Smitty, if Deach was doing this, you'd have no worries. That thing would be tree till the time works, dead and buried 30 years. He'd be out trying to figure out how to cut a tree and make a board out of it. All right, that's it? We got nothing else, right?
Nope.
Oh, I got to do the, oh, yeah, we got to do that one last one. Night, Dan.
There we go.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we have a request. This is for Heidi Wei. He's not going through tonight, so he wants the extension up through March 31st, 2025. So make that in, form a motion.
Second.
The second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, as far as the hearing, he wants to continue it till the March 6th, because he's got some stuff to refile or get filed, so, what was he said he needed? So you have to see what he's, what's he need?
I, I put, there's two letters there. One is to continue, and one is.
Yeah, I know, but he told you what he's missing. Fire Department?
Oh, Fire Department on the street addresses.
Okay, so those are the two things he couldn't go tonight on. All right, so what night are we doing this?
I, what, did you want to go the 6th?
What's on the 6th? Is it?
Wall Street Development for Warwick, Boyd Estates Residence Hearing.
That's it? All right, we'll do it on the 6th then, right?
And final bond release for Boyd.
Yeah, so that, okay.
You can do it at 7:15.
Okay, we'll continue this to 7:15 on March 6th. Okay?
So what was he missing then? Or what was the reason for the delay of the?
He has to, oh, yeah, Kate, you did it.
He needed to speak, to meet with fire and police as far as the new addresses go, like it was the way it's set up. And what was the other one? That was it. We couldn't go forward without, what did they want to use for street address? That was from, actually, from the beginning.
Right.
And he did not.
Right, it's Heidi, it's Heidi Street.
Well, he had also talked about an extension for Kyle Road, so.
It's Heidi Street.
Yeah.
Right, if he was building on, well, I mean, it's like, like a way to the year.
It's not going to be an issue because it's going to be Heidi Street here and Heidi Street there, and you can't get from one to the other.
That's why they're talking to the Fire Department so they can figure it out, because they're the ones that have to respond to it.
So do we need an extension or not?
No, I, we gave it to him.
Still wait.
To the 31st of March. Yeah, we, we didn't open it. We're just, we're just telling you what he's missing, so you understand.
March 6th.
7:05, right?
Um.
I'll look at, it's supposed to be.
Yes.
Yeah. Have a good night.
No, 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 not 7:05.
7:15.
7:15.
Yeah, 7:15.
That's fine, he'll be here.
Rather early than late.
Okay, you can grab a beer.
We're done.
Tessie's.
We're done.
Make a motion to a church.
All's in favor?
All right.
Done.